Good morning, welcome to the July 1st regular session of the Board of Supervisors meeting. Happy kickoff to fiscal year, Michelle. We'll do a roll call, please. I'm Michelle Wolf.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Kurttenbach.
Here.
Paul.
Please join in a moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand and join if you're able. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the free republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, we have a motion to receive. The agenda is received and proposed, resented?
So moved.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Alright.
Motion carries. Item two, do we have any public comments, either from folks in the room or online? This is for items that are not on this morning's agenda. Saying none, we'll move to item three, claims to payments. This is a resolution with the Board of Supervisors approving expenditures that the county audit would be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims as well.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Wade.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is three hundred nine thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and seventeen cents. Of that, we are paying two thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and twenty-two cents from the sixty forty fund. And I would like to point out, so about half of the bills we're paying today really are for FY twenty-five expenses, or a hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred eight three dollars and thirty-six cents. So, that process is going to continue now for the next number of weeks. And that's why, when you ask me for fund balance, like, today, I'm going to say, "I don't know yet." So, I just thought it would be a good opportunity for you to review that. Nothing large or unusual today, so any questions at all? Everything appears to be in order.
We've got a motion in the second. This is a resolution, roll call.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item four, project, receive project updates from department heads. We'll let you know the details.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Alkless, County Engineer. Our contractor on the Debeere Road, the large fox cover, they began pouring the floor yesterday. That, like I told you, that will take quite a while. It has to be done on multiple floors, but that started out well yesterday. Our bridge crew is still, our bridge crew personnel are still on the downed street. We are doing some extensions of pipe for resurfacing on that roadway. Next year, we need to get those pipes replaced so that that work can be done next year. They will be busy on that. Their Aspro will be moving in today, I believe today or tomorrow, to do the patch on downed street. And then we will conclude that work, hopefully by the end of this week before the holidays. And we are mowing, hauling rock, hauling mile rock on the gravel road system. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Ms. Wade.
Morning, Board. Mike Henderson, Director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Just a couple of updates here with holiday coming and things. Couple of things, needed water in one place, didn't get it. Didn't need water in another place, got it. So, that's kind of the story today. Casey Lake, with all the storms last week, seven days of potential heavy rain. Yeah, boy, this might be our chance. We netted about an inch and a half down there. That's about all we got. But, didn't rain north of us, as we all know. And so, Black Hawk Park's been underwater for a while. I bring that up because the second major holiday is upon us. We won't get Black Hawk open for that holiday, just so if you hear things from the public and things like that, we will not get that open. Every, rest of our parks aren't open though, so Siggle Cove, Ickery Hills, Big Woods Lake, and Big Farland Park will all be open, so we're good that way. But unfortunately, Black Hawk won't make it. I've got some drone footage here that Derek Schultz supplied for us, so with, using the drone that they have. So, thanks to Kathy and that, and Derek doing this work. Couple of things I just want to show you with Black Hawk Park. And we will use that to post for the public. So, first of all, here's some, the drone footage. This is Black Hawk Park. This is at the main gate, if you're going in on the main road. So, just a little bit of, this is with drone. And this, again, you know, this is really nothing for what we have to deal with. This will be an easy cleanup when the water gets out of here. Won't be a problem, but obviously, which we, we can't be open. Water will probably be off the road by Friday, and that will create the public to say why our park won't be open. We've got a couple of other photos to show why, because we do have low spots that hold water. They're wet and they're muddy, and the campgrounds are muddy. You'll notice to the upper right-hand corner shortly, the wildlife love it when we close. There's mom and her baby over in the corner.
Grass looks so green.
Yeah, they're loving it too. So, once again, we're pleased that this is all we got. At one point, they predicted ninety-three point nine on the cedar fall scale. That would have been major flooding in there, but it only crested, crested yesterday at about below eighty-nine. So, that, that didn't affect us too badly. Couple of still photos. This is Fog Hill Campground. So, this is why, one of the big reasons why we won't be open. It's not deep, but it's everywhere. And so, it will go out of there fairly quickly, and then, really what it needs is, it just needs time for that water to be able to get down and that stuff to get firm, because everything's soft, and if they drive off the roadway in any, any way, shape, or form, it just tears it up. So, anyway, so... That's just kind of an overall shot. Again, that's the main road going in. This is the park ranger's house, right here. So, that's the main road going in, so you can see, it's not bad, but there's water here and there. Then, one more photo. And that's just the, the main road going in, again, a few shots there. So, anyway, park won't be open, and public will know it, and we're going to post this stuff. But this is amazing, that Derek can do this for us now, because this is, you know, instead of us just posting messages on our webpage, we can, you know, pictures are worth a thousand words, like they say. And when the public sees this, it seems to lessen the, the need to get in there when they see this. So, any questions at all?
I know, sometimes you'll see the public comment, like, "Why don't they do something about flood control there?" But I think it's a good reminder that this park serves as flood control for the city, really.
Exactly what it is. Yep. It's one of the lowest spots along the river, so we take water before anybody else. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Sheriff Nate Neff. Couple of updates on a couple of our projects. One, fear call, for those over here last fall. We got the Taser Exxon package approved. We've been working with Exxon the last couple of months, getting everything installed. Just last week, they were on-site pretty much all week and got the cameras put in the cars, so, on the sheriff's office side of things. And then, a couple technical issues we're still ironing out, but everything's up and running now with that. So, appreciate your support on that project, and that's when, it's going to be huge for us. It was, also included the body cameras for conservation. I think we're still ironing out some tanks on that, and kind of a deal where we're housing it, but it's them underneath, so they're kind of still working on some things on the software side. But we're working through that, and I don't think it'll be too long until they're fully up and running. But, I saw that project's underway. And then, just a quick update on that evidence building. Water was, I think, going to make a couple tweaks to what we proposed to them, which we've kind of expected. Might be a little bit of a back and forth. Chief Duncan's planning on presenting that to the City Council this coming Monday, so then, after that, whatever they can decide, I'll probably be coming back to you guys at some point thereafter. But, nothing too major, nothing that should be a deal breaker or anything like that, but a couple tweaks. So, a couple of big projects there, and then, with the range thing about wrapping up too, I just want to thank you. That's been a lot of support from the sheriff's office with those projects over the last year or so, and I truly do appreciate all that too. So, thank you.
Thanks, Nate.
Thanks. Cheers.
No, just saying thank you.
Okay.
Alright. Any other department heads online?
I have an update. This is Caitlin Emmerich from the Public Health.
Yes.
So, good morning, Board. I just have a quick update for you on some funding that we've been watching pretty closely. We had our regular Board of Health meeting last Wednesday on June twenty-fifth, and at our Board of Health meeting, I briefed the Board of Health that we were watching, and at that time, we're anticipating not receiving funding for the Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program, which is part of the Comprehensive Cancer Control Program through the National Center for Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion out of CDC. CDC had not released those funds as of last week to the states, so the states were unable to award contracts to contractors. I just wanted to let you know that we received notice yesterday that CDC has released funds to states for that Comprehensive Cancer Control Program, specifically the Breast and Cervical Cancer Early Detection Program. So, it looks like we are going to be able to continue services for FY twenty-six, which, frankly, I'm just thrilled about. It was the best news to see that email yesterday come through. I just wanted to share a couple of statistics for the impact that this program has on our community. In FY twenty-five, Public Health received just over forty-six thousand dollars. We served two hundred and seventy-two participants through breast or cervical cancer screening. Two hundred and forty-three women received breast services this past fiscal year that ended yesterday. And among them, three women were diagnosed with breast cancer. And we know that the earlier that you're diagnosed with breast cancer, the better your outcome is for survival. So, the impact of that program is really profound. In Iowa, there were over three thousand women that had a breast service with this program, and among them, thirty women were diagnosed with breast cancer. So, it's a really important program for our county and a really important program for our state, particularly given that the breast cancer is one of the five top cancers in the state of Iowa, and the state of Iowa is currently experiencing high rates of, of cancer above national rates and second in the nation. We also anticipate, hopefully, that we'll receive funds for the colorectal scan, colorectal screening program, colorectal cancer screening program, excuse me, that one's a tongue twister for me this morning, which is also out of the Comprehensive Cancer Control Program at this date. That's the update I have for you today. I'll, I'll kind of come back in the coming weeks and update on the other programs, but since I had good news to share, I wanted to at least share that. Are there any questions for me this morning?
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Caitlin.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. Any other department heads? We'll move to item five, minutes approved for the June twenty-fourth meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, the consent agenda. The items listed will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered settled. So moved.
Second.
But a motion in the second. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item seven, contracts and agreements. This is a resolution to approve the twenty-eight contractual agreement between Black Hawk County and the City of Raymond to provide law enforcement services for a period of three years effective July one through June thirty, twenty-twenty-eight. The City of Raymond will pay Black Hawk County twenty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents for FY twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents for FY twenty-seven, and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents for FY twenty-eight. The Director of Chair and Sheriff to sign as recommended by Nate Neff, Black Hawk County Sheriff.
So moved. Second.
Morning, Board. As I mentioned in the email to you, as I was going through this contract, which actually expired yesterday, was an automatic roll over, so we're still fine there. I got to looking at, over Sheriff Thompson's time in office, he raised that contract about five thousand dollars from start to finish. So, it went from twenty-one thousand seventeen years ago to just over twenty-six thousand dollars right now. Obviously, that, that's a pretty good benefit for Raymond, and while I still want to be a good partner with them and don't want to try and milk them for everything they're worth, when a full-time deputy is about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and probably as of today, that goes up just a touch more even, but we're giving them twenty hours a week, so theoretically, that's seventy thousand dollars a year right there, not to mention any overhead costs on cars, gas, mileage, anything else we have. So, I talked to Mayor Beck over in Raymond and said, "Obviously, budgets are set for this year, so I'm not going to go up on it." But then, each of the next two years, I did a ten percent increase, which is, I mean, still pretty minimal. You're talking twenty-six hundred dollars per year, but, but it's a start. I don't think we should ask them to make up for years of no increases all at once, so this gives them a little bit more of a planning on it, so. And I sent that contract out to him, and both he and the City Clerk actually signed off on it. They didn't have any, anything to say really on it, so, so I've got their, their signatures on the contract, just awaiting years. I did send it over to the County Attorney's Office. I sent it to Heather Jackson, which she admitted that's not her, her strong suit, and I think she's possibly going to have someone else take a look at it.
I was going to say, well, actually, yeah, I would have a direct conflict, because I advise the City of Raymond, so had it been sent to me, I would have had to say, "Sorry, I can..."
Which is what I said to that when I was sitting at the meeting, saying, "Can I give you any advice on this, because I sit in this role too?" So, my guess is that's why I shouldn't have.
Oh, and I think Mike, I mean, when we talked about it with Mike, you said he had tried, and then he had gone on vacation, and I think Brian...
Mike's gone on vacation. It is the exact same contract that we've been under with them for the last eighteen years. I just updated the terms and the dates.
I know, and it was just the fact that you changed the terms and the amounts and stuff, and I thought too, just to have him give a look up for it. But I just thought, I think Brian had mentioned too, he'd take a look at it quick anyway, if not you, so that, I understand your conflict.
I can verify, I can verify it was the exact same, I can verify it from my role as the Raymond City Attorney, it was the exact same thing, which does the contract so then historically.
Okay.
So, the only change was in the policy.
So, if you're comfortable with that, you can vote on it. If not, you're going to wait till Mike gets back to it, or that's, that's up to you, is what...
Everybody's comfortable with it. On Mike, I was going to say, or, like I said, or if you're trying to look at it too, if you wanted to. I mean, we could put it on there, just contingent, and I'm looking at it, but go ahead and approve it, or pause that.
There's currently coverage.
There's currently coverage, so we're fine.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to abandon them, and again, like I said, it's, the rate's not going to change for this year from what it was last year, and the terms of the contract are, so, so we'll just keep rolling on as if the horse signed anyway, so.
I appreciate the way, the way you went, the work you went to do it. I was going to say, looking at and examining, I guess, what had been done, and then, what was seemed to be accurate.
I'm comfortable signing it. Like I said, it's the same document that's been in effect. It's, it's your decision if you guys want to vote to sign on it or not.
Let's just do it. I was kind of good with it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll tell you, that's a hell of a deal.
Yeah, it is.
That is a seventy thousand dollar value for twenty-six thousand dollars, and even at a ten percent increase, it's going to take us, what, fifteen years? And that's to get to the seventy thousand dollar mark, which is, we're probably going to be in twenty to twenty-five at that rate of increase in order to get hammer.
Right.
And, but at some point, I think there might have to be some, some Band-Aid pull there.
Yeah, there's going to have to be an adjustment in there, but...
So, I'm not in favor of a three-year. I'd be in favor of a one-year, understanding that budgets are, right, but to enter into a three-year agreement while we're still not really making up the ground that we're going to need to make up to get this contract to right-sized, doesn't seem... Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with a one-year, I'm not comfortable with a three, but I'm one of five.
And you're comfortable with the one-year remaining, as it is, since we didn't have the discussion.
Correct, correct. But I think, it sounds like it was a pretty recent discovery that...
Yeah.
That, that there was a five thousand dollar increase over the last twenty.
Yeah, I just got to looking over this over the last few weeks. It hasn't dawned on me that this was coming up, so.
What about a two? Just going through twenty-six and twenty-seven, and then, next twenty-eight. And then, reevaluate, give them a little bit of time to prepare.
Well, we've got a year to prepare, though. I mean, as far as to evaluate and consider and have discussions, and then...
Which we could, again, and part of that was, to be honest, is the new sheriff coming in, and I didn't want to come roaming over to Raymond and sometimes doubling their contract in my first year.
Oh, yeah. It's a nice way to do it, phasing in. It's just that, yeah, for three years, it still ties that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think doing the year is, is good, because we, this is basically essentially a situation where a city gets to artificially keep their tax rate lower, because we're picking up the bulk of the, of the cost.
Like an eighty percent.
Yeah, but we are taxed.
Full quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, if we were to even go with two-year, it just gives us an excuse to not talk water for a year.
Yeah.
But, I mean, like, it, it...
But, and no one's coming. I mean, no, that's what our intent is.
I think if we were to say, if we were to say a year, then we could get into some meaningful conversations of how we get that number to something closer than what we're in as actual. Or, because we've, we've done some budgeting stuff throughout the years to have, you know, a real rate reflects a little different than it has in the past, to, to be a little bit more true on that number, feels like for this contract to be so far off from actual, so it seems a little, little faulty. I think supportive of one-year, I don't know if I'm, I know I'm not there for it.
Dave, I've seen your, what you're saying, same token, knowing the threads we have, what's going on. I've attended the City Council meetings there in Raymond several times, and, no, their, their budget's even more limited than what ours is. So, that's where I agree with the two-year. I think we need at least do a two-year, just in process of not putting them in term one. Because I think even just this next year, not knowing what's coming out of Des Moines, we never know what's coming out of Des Moines, Rich.
I mean, we could never use that one as a...
I just, working with them, I just, I, that's where I feel that two-year would be, I think it'd be beneficial for both of us, and looking, give Nate more time to look at what really should be.
So, we've got a year. We've got a year, and if we need another year at, at the end of this, because we can't figure it out, then we can take another year.
We could, yeah.
But, but if we lock ourselves in for two, then, like I said, I just, just, if past is prologue, it means we don't touch this thing for another fifteen, sixteen months.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say the kicking the can down the wrong thing I've heard that, that used to be said on here. I was going to say, but...
Well, sometimes things take kind of work through.
They do.
And like I said, that's kind of what the discussion's for, so.
If, if, if we were to do a year, and, like I said, if we couldn't come to some level of agreement, we could always do another year in consequence.
Yeah. And I don't want to see us go into a two-year and then break it, or decide then we should have done something differently and come back. I just like it to be upfront.
Protects our flexibility as we try to get this thing figured out, because it was a, it's been a short window since we made it, although Nate's been able to sort of delve into this.
So, then, all you would need to do then is just...
I, I mean, if you voted altered, I would obviously either scratch your three, or yours two and three, whatever, and I'm sure they'll have no issue taking the one-year at the same, and then, kind of go back. And I actually have a meeting with Mayor Beck on something else Thursday morning, so I explained to him that we're looking at for the future too, so. So, I think, I think they, they have to know they're getting back to the deal right now.
Yeah, I'm sure that's, you said there weren't any comments or questions.
What's that?
Right, with it, nothing to say.
That's exactly...
Yeah, it got signed and emailed right back to me, so.
So, we do want to go ahead with it, to propose the one-year rather than delay action on it at all, so.
Because the motion was on the three years.
Motion was on the three. And it needs us either amend the motion, or...
Make the motion then, to amend the motion to a one-year term for the same amount stated for the first year. So, year twenty-six, all other language, I guess, remaining the same, taking out the additional years.
So, strike year.
Strike year's twenty-seven, twenty-eight, yeah.
I'll, I'll second that amendment.
Are we okay to do it that way? Do we need to have...
Would you rather just let this die and let me propose a new contract with just the one-year?
Well, I think at this point, effectively, that's what we need to do, is we would just put...
Right, which I know is what you're doing, but I don't, amending except for that, whatever...
Well, then you wouldn't have to come back to us. If we, if we were to say...
That's true.
We're good for, for one-year, they accept that, then you can execute it, then they don't have to come back to us.
You can do the amendment, just take a, take a roll call vote on the amended motion, and then a roll call if we're up against a motion again, see what's right. She just did a friendly amendment, and you got a second, so now, ask if everyone's in favor of the amendment.
Okay, and then we'll take a motion.
And you'll take a motion on the actual, yeah.
Got it, okay. So, we'll do a roll call, though, on the language of the amendment.
Roll call, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Alright, now we have a, a roll call vote for the motion, for the resolution of a one-year contract with Raymond in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and one dollars and seventy-six cents. So moved. Roll call, please.
Layland.
Yes.
Kurttenbach.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Thank you. Item eight-eight, discussion of possible board action with judicial hospitalization referee contract.
Well, I was going to say, Chief Judge LeCarre's here, you know, please, I was going to say to provide an update. I think everybody remembers all the details of last week and where we were at, and kind of in limbo, and some activity has occurred, and so I think she was able to join us on her first day of vacation.
Second day of vacation, brought back on the river this morning.
Good morning, Supervisors. I am Kellyanne LeCarre. I'm the Chief Judge of the First Judicial District. I know and have met at various times with, I think, some of you. Black Hawk County is, of course, our primary urban district here in the First Judicial District. I know that County Attorney Williams addressed you last week and went into quite a bit of detail, and also, I have had some contact with Supervisor Layland and provided a memo on the very critical issue that we have with our mental health referee, our hospitalization referee. The saga continues, I guess, to some extent. We are in a slightly better place than we were last week, but nothing is resolved as of this point in time. Just to update you, I know that when County Attorney Williams spoke to you last week, sort of laid this all out, we were in a situation where we had no contract from the Primary Care Association. Primary Care Association is the new entity that's taking over mental health services in the state of Iowa. There, that association is divided into districts. Black Hawk County happens to be a District Seven. So, County Attorney Williams was here before you on Tuesday morning. On Tuesday afternoon, we actually had a contract from the state drop into the email of our District Court Administrator, Lena Height, who's also here with me. Unfortunately, that contract gets us positively in some directions, but doesn't make a lot Unfortunately, that contract gets us positively in some directions, but doesn't make a lot of progress in other directions for us. The positive notes are, we got a contract, uh, the other positive note, I guess, is, is that contract appears to have an amount in it that is roughly seventy percent of our hospitalization referee contract, which is what the state has traditionally paid. State pays seventy percent, county has paid thirty percent traditionally. The downsides are that the contract appears to be written more for a mental health vendor, for instance, like a social worker or a psychiatrist or something like that who would be doing work with the state. So, it's not in a format that, um, really aligns with the service that's being provided. The other downside is that it contains, because technically the, uh, you know, the state of Iowa as the primary care association entity and the state of Iowa as the judicial branch that are signing off on this contract. It also contains terms that just aren't compatible between two state entities signing a contract, a lot of which centers around, uh, some indemnification language. So as a result, when we sent it on to the judicial branch, state court administration down in Des Moines, they basically indicated that they would not be able to sign off on it. To further complicate matters, the person who sent us this email then was not responsive to our attempts to get feedback. And we have continued to make efforts to get that kind of feedback so that we could negotiate this contract. And on Monday, I guess yesterday, we finally got the name of a person as opposed to what appears to be a robot on the other side, but we finally got the name of a person that we can have contact with. And we opened up that line of communication, but we are, we are not a hundred percent there in, in, in reaching a contract. We hope to get there. So, my thought process is this and why I were before you today. I know when County Attorney, County Attorney Williams was here and our hospitalization referee was here last week and our assistant district court administrator, at that point, we were coming to with the hope that the county would be willing to pick up a hundred percent of this contract in the event that the state was. Now we have some indication the state might come through, uh, but again, not fully there. What I'm asking for at this point is if the county would consider paying one hundred percent of July for the hospitalization referee so that we could have that extra thirty days to, uh, proceed to negotiate this contract and to try to reach some type of resolution with the state. Um, I'm happy to answer questions, uh, and fill in any more details that you have, but I mean, I guess the, the, the crux of it is, the, the, the short, uh, part of my request at this point is just that we find some way to Band-Aid July so that we, you know, I think, I was probably told to you that we have over four hundred open mental health and substance abuse, uh, commitment cases, uh, in Black Hawk County. And that's, that's, our ability to triage that without a referee, uh, it would be, would be very difficult. We would, I think, see a loss of those excellent services if we're not able to get ourselves through.
As you're speaking, that's where my thoughts were going, so I'll, I'll offer the motion to, on this, all right, go ahead.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you know who it's contemplated that judicial referee would be an employee of? Does that continue to be a state employee instead of you would be reimbursing someone?
Yes, so by code, um, and I don't have the code section off the top of my head, it was in an email we exchanged yesterday, but by code, those referees are state employees, the judicial branch has always paid that employee as if they're an employee of the judicial branch and then sought reimbursement from the state and from the county. So it would continue in the same way, except that when you received the county bill for July, and we can have our people in Des Moines put together like a one-month contract that, that, you know, that says the county agrees to pay a hundred percent for July. And, uh, just so we can live ourselves along, but you would, you would get a, a special reimbursement.
Just wanted to be sure who's actually giving her paycheck.
Yep, stay with.
For the payroll tax.
Yep.
And we talked about that as far as we thought she's paid like twice a month or something like that, every couple of weeks or whatever.
It seems like she's payroll the same way all judicial branch employees are paid.
And then she'd continue working, she'd continue working.
Yeah, she's waiting probably right now to hear whether she's continuing to work, uh, today because the contract, the prior contract ended yesterday.
And from the board's perspective too, we have budgeted thirty percent, but thirty percent to which would easily cover that one, if that was a problem for anyone anyway.
I'll, I'll second your motion, just for a process.
How much was it, just for the month, just out of curiosity?
The hundred, the, the contract in general?
For July, just for July.
Oh, well, it would be one twelfth of fifty-six thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Uh, is roughly, I mean, those are rough numbers.
Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars, it'd be a one twelfth of that.
Twenty-six was fifty-eight, I think I said to the, this player twenty-six, but still.
Let's see Brian over in the corner.
I tried to ask, yeah.
Right, last week, I think we had talked, you know, is there any state statute that concludes us from funding this, I don't know, there was a little bit maybe.
No, there's no statute, I, I had secondary concerns about the ethical considerations if we paid for a one hundred percent of it. We can figure something out, but there, there was some discussion there, um, because we'd have to be neutral.
We talked about it also as far as I saw, maybe needing to sit down, you could, because it was gonna be their staff, I think your staff, your administrative staff that would be doing the work if Diane weren't there. So how we get all three parts, I guess, work through it too, if we needed to, but please get us to a point of getting through the next thirty days and hopefully have some good response or good.
Yeah, I, I mean, I moved Judge LaCarre on this, this, this agreement, I mean, if, if you read it, it feels like I'm going to the doctor. It doesn't talk about that these are involuntary hospitalizations. And some of the, some of the language in here, it just doesn't mesh with the type of hearings that we're talking about here, so.
It's probably written by AI.
Right, and I know, you know, Primary Care Association is sending out thousands of contracts to ride right now, right? And to have every contract specifically tailored, the present contract we have, I think is maybe three pages long and this one's eighteen. It's got a lot more words.
Very cumbersome.
We're hoping to go back to the three-page one.
And you say you had a contact now, somebody you hope to work through and.
We think we have a lot more being on the other side now.
Mostly.
May I be seen in that, is anything more right now?
Anything more?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second to fund that position a hundred percent for the month of July. Additional discussion or?
My only question is, we can approve this, but if the state's not funding your continued employment, do we write the check after or, I mean, I'm a little concerned of the state making decisions that we're trying to over, I guess, I don't see a problem doing it, I just, I'm not sure we got all the logistics of it going through yet.
But we don't, I think that's what we'll be doing in the next thirty days, hoping that we have that resolved. Because otherwise we're without the services, is kind of where we're at now, which is kind of typical from the state. I just mean from the state perspective, that's what they tend to do to us sometimes, is make us have to do it. I think they were very comfortable in wanting us to pay the whole thing, somebody was funding us too anyway, so it was like this.
We were making that ask.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying we won't come back and make that ask again some way.
I, I, exactly, yeah.
But for right now, we hope to get, we hope to get things resolved within the month.
Okay. You got a motion and a second, let's do a roll call.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurt and Buck.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you, good luck.
Yeah, let us know.
Your negotiations.
Thank you. Give you a break.
Yeah, thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation too.
Yeah.
Uh, item A B, discussion of possible board action on amending department budgets using funds from a previous year's remaining amounts.
Well, um, I added this item, um, primarily because of the next item that was on the agenda when Gabby had made the request of us to amend the twenty-six marketing budget by seven thousand dollars, using the twenty-five funds. My question's to Michelle and I mentioned it to Gabby as well, is, is that this is something new and something we haven't really done as far as allowed that. If it were done, it probably, probably needed a policy in place. And the discussion among the board on what thoughts, feelings were, not just that it had to happen all today either, because I realize this is just last minute. But, um, to have that discussion and, um, that it should apply to other departments or I don't know all, that'd be one of the questions, if it applies to all, what the circumstances would be that we'd want to do it. But when there are funds left in a, in a previous year's budget and could be used, I wasn't thinking for the most part for new asks, like the, okay, you've got money there and people would do it. But I don't want to exclude that because maybe there are options or opportunities for us to do something with that as well. But, um, it was just to help define when there's funding in the budget and maybe there's a reason for, um, a project delay or something that's not gonna happen in the timeline that we thought it would or should or whatever, and just being able to carry that over so it was completed and in a timely way. And not, um, you know, starting all over from scratch and putting it in general fund, then taking it off for the next year for the same item. I had some questions myself, I've been going forward with this and I know, um, I've mentioned it, like I say, to Gabby and Michelle, so Michelle may have even had some ideas or thoughts on it already, I don't know. But it was really just to make sure we were doing, um, what we needed to by regs, making sure we were transparent and accountable, but if this wasn't, this one I know is a particularly different one in the fact that it is kind of like a new request, but it is, um, Gabby's, I mean. Um, the, that it's because there was funding in her budget that allowed it and because of strategic planning and some of the things that we are trying to do with strategic planning, mission and, you know, values and those kind of things and ideas she had for us helping to do that internally as well as maybe external some things as well. Saw the need and asked for it, I think, earlier in the year, wasn't not early, too much earlier in the year, but before the year end. And, and I think we didn't really respond or get to it in a timely way either, so she came and brought it back again and and said this is a way we could do it or whatever and would the board consider it. Which at that time, then, like I say, kind of prompted me, like, maybe it is something to consider, but for broader. So that's kind of where we got, I don't know, that kind of sums up, get probably, not well, but Gabby's, um, item too, but that, that's where this action came from.
If we'd like to have a policy in place, um, can we just, for now, amend the next motion? Because I mean, the funds are coming from fund balances, that's where it's gone back to, um, to just, um, indicate that it's coming, that the seven thousand's coming from fund balance and not reference the.
And not go that, not do it, and I did think it'd be relatively, but I did ask Michelle when timing and things like that would have to be done to have something in place because policies, as we know, sometimes are, some of them are taking longer, but this one maybe not so much, maybe it would be easy, but I thought we had a policy review board coming up too, and if there was something that could be proposed that everybody thought made sense, then we could do it relatively soon, not just delay it or something too, but it probably, to me, it would be good to have it at the policy review just to see if there are other departments, what that means to them or what types of things people would want to consider or want us to consider. I don't know. So I'm open to thoughts on today, but it was really just to kind of put this out there.
Michelle, from an accounting side, I mean, is that, is that much of a nightmare for you?
Well, it will be some work, but there's, I spent some time trying to see if people, other places had policies about this, didn't have a lot of luck. Um, but trying to think through what that could look like for departments. And Al, would you mind pushing the, pushing the magic button button there? I didn't, I haven't tried to write a policy, I just wanted to kind of show you what I think our starting point would be. And I, probably against my better judgment, I'm, I'm going to share some information. So today, our general fund looks like we're maybe at, to the good, about six hundred and forty thousand dollars, but we have, we're showing very little in payables, last year payables one point seven million, we're also gonna have receivables, there's just a lot of unknowns today. But if we, so if we were going to do this, I would think one of the things we might want to talk about is using carryover to do it the next year. So I'm trying to show you carryover, I, I rounded it up to a million, might be more, might be a lot, might be less, I, I just can't answer that today. But I just remind you again, we've talked about these before, the commitments that you've already made that will be coming out of fund balance as of June of twenty-five, when we get our audit, we are gonna take all these items out of our general fund on a sign. And that total is over three point eight million. And I will say, this does not even include the forty thousand or advertising that was approved previously for vacancies, yeah. And not all those, that whole forty thousand was not coming out of the general fund, but probably most of it is. And it may very well be covered by the departments, that's why I didn't put it in here. I, I just wanted to mention, I'm not trying to throw everything in the kitchen sink in here, I tried to remember the more significant things that we will, we'll see a difference in your on the side of fund balance. So, we will use, you know, even if we clear a million, we will still use close to two point eight, two point nine this year. That's gonna move into other categories, um, yeah. So then, I, that's not a good year to use for an example, I don't have any carryover to use, right? Because where that carryover comes from is a collection of what all the department's actual performance was, their revenue exceeding their expenses. So, I thought, well, let's try next year, let's see what happens in twenty-six. In twenty-six, um, I actually, I'm using the, if anyone wants to look at those numbers, I am using the turnover factor as increase. I have no logical reason for that, I'm just using it. So, well, if I start out with that and say that's what our carryover magically is going to be, if you look at our five-year capital, we, there's one point one five nine million in it of items that don't qualify for bond funding right now, so we're gonna take that out of that carryover. Which, so there will be, hopefully, you know, that would, just on paper, that would leave forty thousand to be shared among really the board activities and all your departments. You know, I would, because in my head, I was tossing around ideas like, what if we allowed departments to request five percent of this pool? And I'm using the pool, not their budgets, because their budgets vary so much. We have budgets that are maybe a couple hundred thousand, we have the sheriffs, which is probably eighteen million. So how do you, how do you make that make sense? You, but even a five percent on a nineteen million dollar budget turns into a large amount, right? So I would think we might want to use some, if you choose to even do such a thing, you would, you'd want to use a percent and then maybe have it at a dollar amount, I, I don't know, and that may be something you want to consider case by case. And I really would encourage you to require the department supply for it. I'd, I'd rather see us choose to do this ahead of time, rather than in May, when we're processing, you know, people are getting ready for year end and just putting in amendments to use fund balance at that time, because by then, it's almost, not completely, but almost impossible to say no, is the money already been spent or committed in general. Adopting something like this would, I'll give you a little more control throughout the year.
I would see it more or less as a request that have to come before the board too, as far as approval and like, you're the justification, you're the reason for it, whatever, and that's why I said it makes sense and then the board makes that decision. I guess, I'm curious, when you say talk about a percentage, and, and this is why I was trying to be careful when I was thinking about it, was like not to create a, here you have funding at the end of your budget and you can, what would you like to do with it, more or less, as you budgeted, we're committed to that, but are there reasons to look at that carryover for extending it to none of the other project, of the department, of us, of the taxpayers, because we tax work.
Right.
But that it just doesn't happen at that time.
And I, I think one factor you'd want to remember when a department comes and says, I have X, I didn't get this project finished, I want to still do it.
Yeah.
I totally get all that and it makes sense, it would relieve some of the pressure that I see happening around here in June to, oh my gosh, I gotta re-get this under done. So that part would be good.
Yeah.
But I think you have to balance that with the fact that you're already committing, you're, we're already assuming kind of that we're gonna have carryover and that that's how we plan to fund basically all our equipment purchases for the next year. So, I, I don't know that we want to give it away twice, if you give it away to equipment. And the problem is, some departments are equipment-heavy users, some are. I don't know that, I haven't figured out in my head what's a fair way to figure that out about who gets how much, that's, that's why I, that's why I'm showing you, maybe want to take out the other things you're committing and then just have a countywide pool left that you want to allow departments to request funding.
So if you don't, if you just say, department X, you were hundred thousand dollars under your budget for previous completed fiscal, and I, the other thing's only be one completed fiscal. I'll, I'll, do you want to get, you know, well, I save the county over the last ten years, this, that gets really convoluted.
Yeah.
To me, to me, one year back makes sense based on the department, so if the department spent right up to the brink, to be able to say, well, I, I want to use a little bit of fund balance for, like, that, that, that becomes a different conversation, uh, or, or this balanced fund.
See, that's a, it's an important difference whether you're gonna allow a department to use what they left in their budget in twenty-five, because no one has put that one point five nine million in their budget. So what we're, what we're attempting to do is, we're not telling each department, you have to set aside something, or we're gonna cut your budget by something. We are kind of rolling the dice to say, based on years of experience with budgets, we know some departments, and it changes every year, but we'll save, we're hoping we're gonna save that much, or we're gonna have to use the reserves. But I'm more thinking ahead to when, when our reserves get down to that point that we don't want to drop below, how are we gonna keep this ball rolling?
Well, it doesn't mean that we have to do these.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't mean it's automatic, I, I, I would still envision that they still have to come back to us and we still have to say, yes, we're gonna make that expenditure.
I think you want it, I think you need it.
Yeah, that control of it, yeah, it's not just assumed, no, it is, and it might be, because we don't have the funds, I'm sorry, we can't this year, but hopefully we would have like quarterly reports or whatever, I guess, that would show us beforehand, we don't have that. I mean, something similar.
But the problem that we really get into when you, I can always show you things on a cash basis. If I showed you that today, straight out of the general fund, I can tell you general fund cash is down right now today, three point seven million from a year ago. But a lot of that, maybe all of it, is from our replacement revenue spending, so it's, I just can't give you full, unfortunately, I can't give you full accrual. So it's, I just can't give you full, unfortunately, I can't give you full accrual stuff every quarter. And especially if you look in the first quarter, it's gonna look like we're having a great year, because a lot of our expenses, a lot of the July expenses get put back to the previous year, right? So we haven't spent twenty five percent of our budget when we get to September, I don't think, I would be very shocked if that ever happened. So it's, it's just difficult to give you very accurate information on an earned basis. I, I'm happy to give you what I have.
Well, maybe, maybe I'm thinking of the actual projects we'd be looking at, if there is, if I'm looking to identify what that is.
Yeah, we could certainly do that, sure, 'cause they'll know.
It's like, okay, what are the circumstances that would allow it or not allow it, or so you would plan accordingly.
Yeah, that would work.
No beforehand, instead of like, oh, sure, it doesn't.
This, this has never been allowed in the past.
I don't know if it's ever been allowed, I doubt it then, if it hasn't, I don't, probably hasn't, no.
It's like I'm getting whispered all these waysmen years past, and suddenly you see, you're saying, don't do this, it's a slippery slope.
It is.
This is?
Yes.
Why?
I don't know, I'm just in here, I, I get this feeling that it's not been allowed in the past for a reason. So I understand where the next item coming up, these dollars were figured they would be spent by them, so these were.
No, but they weren't budgeted, my point is with that, those weren't budgeted for the year and then would have been spent. Those were just dollars remaining in her budget, and there is a need that we could use those. So that's a difference, that's why I said, budgeted and allocated in a year, and then coming up to the end of the year, hasn't, haven't had something, you know, be completed or be done or started even, because maybe there'd been something wrong.
Or bids come back, and a hop, a hop is a decent amount.
Or bid, it could be anything, yeah.
I guess I'd be open to a really limited policy with the understanding that it's really the exception, because I think overall that we, we do need to see those leftover dollars going back into the fund balance, both because we've got the turnover pools, this is a big part of our budgeting now, um, and how we're able to budget, um, and just the, as Michelle has laid out, like, the limitations are over how we can pay for it, but, so we, we do need to.
Well, if we wanna do it, because we don't have to, I just meant, we're gonna start doing it for one, or, and particularly, one just became a board, department gets to do it, but others, we don't consider it, didn't seem fair or equitable on it either. So to me, if we choose not to do it, that's okay too, and everything goes back to reserves and we start over. But, I mean, that goes to reserves at the end of the year and we start over.
And then if we decide we wanna do, we make a budget, but at the end of the, like, it, it does sort of seem a little, it's six in one and half a dozen in the other. Uh, to, to some extent, um, because it's all gonna come back to us to make a decision. Whether we're gonna, whether we're gonna say it's sort of codify it, the policy, or if it's just gonna be a pro request.
Well, that, and that's to me, like, if you kind of kept, if you keep it within the budget is one thing too, and it's only budgeted dollars, budgeted projects, and that's, sorry, we're just extending the timeline. To me, that's very easily identified, and you are very transparent with it, and you do earmark those dollars, and this is why we're doing it, kind of the justification, versus, oh, there's money in my budget and now I could purchase something or do another service or something that, well, you didn't budget for that last year. To me, that's a little cloudy, so to speak, when you're talking about doing something different.
Yeah, but to, but to me, we're asking the department, yeah, I think, I think that's it, right? Like, if, if we're saying to the department heads, you know, be thoughtful. Sometimes an opportunity presents itself in July or August that you didn't necessarily recognize the previous January, um, when you were crafting the budget, right? To me, the, we're after folks to be innovative, it shouldn't be, be innovative in January.
Well, and if we find out, I guess we'd rather have it in reserves, I guess that's our call at the time of the decision, it was like, well, yeah.
But I don't want it to be this thing where we're, oh, oh my God, we can never touch, right? Like, clearly, we have to touch those dollars at times.
So I don't see it as really the slippery slope, just that we have to be careful and cautious and be transparent, accountable. We have a process in place, that's kind of where the policy part comes in, to where it's not just we're gonna do it occasionally, whenever somebody brings it up, we put a policy in place, but isn't always easy. But, you know, to work to it, we have finance expert to, at least for the language and how that would work or how it wouldn't. And it's just to consider it at this point, right? But it was just like, to move forward and start approving things that we've not done before.
If it's item by item, like, I know what this is for, that's one thing. I, this, I understood this was supposed to be part of the rollout with the strategic plan. So we're holding that up, 'cause we want to incorporate some of the input, feedback from the staff on that. I don't know if that's the reason why this is held up, but same token, I'm not in favor. I think this is, if this was something that was easily to be a decision to make, uh, by department, by department, this had been done already. There's a reason why it hasn't been, if anybody has a request, like this next one coming up, then bring it to us, and then we'll make a decision. But setting up a policy for it, I'm uncomfortable with that. I, I think there's, comes a reason why we have fiscal years in our set budgets. And each of the staff know, we've heard it time and time again, when they've been here getting their budgets ready for us, that they have a deadline, they know that these dollars. We had a, an item, we made a decision on back in April, because we knew the deadline was coming up. I, I'm uncomfortable with making a policy, saying we're gonna be doing this, other than individual requests.
That's how we will be doing it, though, maybe, it's not a policy to be a blanket, it would be a policy that we would do this as individual requests.
I guess I'm comfortable with, with seeing the policy. Right, I think that's, I think that's kind of where the discussion is today, is do we even wanna start the process of crafting policy, or are we just gonna shut the door on it? I'm, I, it's, I'm not, I'm not giving it a, a, a signature endorsement or a vote quite yet. I'm just, I, I think I'm probably with you, where it's, well, let's, let's work that through the process, to see if there is a policy that makes sense, um, and not sort of slay the door on it before we get to the point of rigor, right? And, and what does it tangibly look like? There's, there's value in getting through that policy committee.
It's just exploring at this point, not completely.
With exploring?
I, I, again, I think this is, discussion I've had about this issue, it's, it's not been done for reasons 'cause it opens up other problems that we have to deal with, with the finance side of it.
I would say it's probably not been approached, I wouldn't say it's not been done before, that there's been any decision, there's not been any discussion from the time I've been here, and I know that's only been thirteen years, but there's not been any discussion of it. It just seemed like having a policy in place was a safer way for the board or the taxpayers for everyone to consider, just consider at this point, on whether or not it is helpful to us, or whether or not we even want to look at it.
So next step, uh, I mean, I guess, yeah, we don't necessarily need to take an action, if, if a policy, yeah, take a fight.
No, I, no, I, yeah, I even hate to put action on there when it's just kind of open discussion for us now, but it was just like, yeah, I didn't, where, where it goes.
Potentially see a policy at some point, and folks can vote it up or vote it down, or whatever they, they choose, I guess.
Whether or not there's a policy, just a very general one or whatever, over the last, say, five or ten years, anybody could have still come forward with a request, right? And that would be no different going forward.
I think they could have, I don't know if they would have, I was gonna say, no, I don't know that they had that level of, they could have done it, it was just the.
The option was there.
I don't wanna put anyone on the spot, but prior boards, I think, have led your departments to believe they should not do that unless it was absolutely an emergency.
Oh, I don't even know if they said emergency, I just think it was just like they didn't, and there were board members that shut it down, not a board decision.
Right, yeah, I'm saying, I just was indicating prior, prior times.
So I think the board, yeah, the staff has done pretty.
So I think guidelines and direction to the departments is helpful, whether, whether, yes, yes, whatever you wanna call it,
Yeah, having a policy or something for guidelines.
I, I do think your departments probably would appreciate that. Nobody wants to go to the work of creating a proposal and bringing it to you if you say, we don't do that, don't come here again, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
I think a mechanism to do it for you, and I, I totally agree, I would, we are not, I don't believe we're financially in a place where we can just allow every department to roll over some portion of their budget. But I would think, if they bring you a request that you could consider individually, there might be some merit in that, if you choose to do that, you certainly don't have.
And see, that's the question you're kind of trying to address, is they have no to request, and that's, I see that, that's what I'm saying. If it's a request, it's gotta come for all of us.
There's extenuating circumstances, like this, next one coming up, I understand that being extenuating circumstance. Any department had extenuating circumstance, I'd be open to hear that. But, but is that a policy saying that we're open for this to?
No, I'm not even asking that, I don't think, I hope nobody thought that, I'm just asking for a policy to make it open to doing it, just like, we're gonna do it without individual requests, it, it's just a policy that would say, maybe, it will be an individual request, it will have, have this in it, this in it, this in it, a reason for why you're asking, I don't know. You know, it's no different than they'd make a request of us as an agenda item, we'd have to, we'd have to get the right information, or we wouldn't do it.
And I think to Michelle's point, previous board members, uh, who may have long shadows and, and, uh, here and come, set a tone, and I think that tone stifled innovation. And I think for this board to put in place a framework, not a guarantee, but a framework that says, we want to hear innovation, we want to hear your new ideas, we want to, and we want that to be ongoing. We aren't gonna say, don't, don't bring this to us until budget time, and then at budget time, say, well, you didn't bring it to us before. And that is what department heads have heard in this building for long enough for it to be institutional. Uh, I think creating a policy and a framework that allows for that more free-flowing, constructive version of innovation, um, it can still be responsible, it can still be very tight, it, there can still be a process to it, but I think having a policy in place would help set that tone for department heads, that we wanna hear the new ideas. Because budgets are set early, and, and stuff changes, and we want to, we aren't, if we aren't gonna be responsive to changing circumstances, then we're in a tough spot as a local government, but.
I understand everything you just said, Davis, I just, I don't agree with putting in a policy. I just, I just, I just, this is, this is the timeline we have working, we're responsible for those time periods. If there's extending circumstances, please bring it. If there's not, then this is, this is how government works. I think we're, your innovation thoughts, David, I understand that, I, 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 I hear you. But when it comes down to, we have dollars here to here, I think you're opening up, I guess, Pandora's box, but I think you're opening up other issues that can come back upon us, I, I just, that's my, that's my.
In the interest of the discussion and of the meeting, quite frankly, this isn't, this isn't, there's no motion, there's no intent for a motion. This will be a policy that gets brought through policy review, and you can go ahead and you can vote it down if you so choose, and the rest of the board can do the same, and we can move on to item eight C, motion to amend, uh, the FY twenty six marketing budget by seven thousand, I hear a suggestion of using fund balance.
Yes.
It's amenable, uh, as recommended by Gabby Duitt, marketing coordinator.
So.
Second.
Hello, board.
Good morning.
Hi, Gabby.
Morning. Um, Al.
No.
She doesn't need to be staring at that.
Yes. Um, yeah, so official can opener of worms at your service, marketing coordinator.
No.
I had no idea that this was such a big thing, and it is partly, I, I hate to keep saying I knew here, but this is brand new for me. And so, um, yeah, when we do our budgets, uh, like you said in your discussion, it was October and then January, strategic planning was just kind of getting started, and then the more we got involved in it, the more I started to think, oh, you know, we're gonna have to put this visible, this is gonna become visible if we want the county to adopt it. So I think in early June, I sent an email with some ways that we'd been very fortunate to come in under budget on the branding of the vehicles, on the, um, our badges, there's several things that we came in quite under budget. And so we had this dollar amount, this is my time, talent, treasure, part of strategic planning. And so I think in early June, I brought forward a couple options. But I didn't hear back from anybody, I think, except for Justin, and so then it was getting to be a time that we couldn't purchase it and have it here by June thirtieth. And so then I was asking, and I asked Michelle, I don't, you know, what's the next option? And so I had no idea that it was not something that was usually done, nor that it was going to cause, um, the conversation that it did. So whatever guidance you have, I mean, I have things, um, I have pricing on them, I have ideas as far as how we will implement once we approve our strategic plan, um, but yeah, I'm just looking for guidance on, 'cause now it's July.
Well, how do we go about even, you gave it a selection, I know, and that was kind of part of the problem, okay, I like this one, I don't care for that.
I put too much in an email, is what you're saying.
And I, I just thought, I, you know, to say like, no, I'm not gonna say all of the above, or right with me, I didn't like that. But then you get five different, you know, exactly, they all respond, it was like, yes, I like this, you know, I don't like that. So I did have that issue early on, but it was kind of just like, like, nevermind, I won't say, those pens with the rollout thing. It's like, no, I don't like those at all, those have been broken five seconds, but I just, you know, things like that, but I just.
And that feedback is always welcome.
But.
I probably was, was it still working?
That's 'cause you never open them, knowing those message.
They're kind of like a pigeon, a pigeon spinner, yeah.
When I pull out a couple pens, they're done.
Yeah, well.
No, but you know, I do, you know, my point is, it's just like, okay, what, how do we get to the point where those are the things we like? And, you know, the, why we don't put signs or nice, uh, drawings or something in everybody's department and have the mission statement and a nice job of that, I mean, there were a million ways you had that we could do, and it was just like, yeah, all of the above.
Exactly.
But, but I think that was why you didn't get the responses, like.
It's a little too open-ended.
I guess, 'cause we could all just say what it is, and then you'd have to wade through it and say, well, I got three people that like this, and two that don't.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah.
But then, yeah, you didn't know you were opening this up, and nobody did probably, until I looked at it and thought like, well, we haven't done this before.
Right.
So, yeah, let's, let's take a look at this for everybody, instead of just our department, yeah. So, that you really haven't got that identified as far as the amount, of whether we'd spend seven thousand or not, just that you've got it in your budget and up to that amount, is what you're asking for these ideas for the rollout.
Right, right, and so I think I've, um, I, we've talked about doing, you know, having it, um, displayed in the boardroom. I have a price on that, um, from a couple vendors, um, doing some cards that people can just carry behind their badges, so that it's not, not the pin that I agree doesn't write well.
No, I understand.
Um, and, um, then also signage for inside, um, offices, so that they can have it.
Now, you've not submitted that to us yet, though, I mean, we haven't seen that like the overall.
I haven't, because I didn't know where the money, yeah, where the money was gonna come from, 'cause it's not in my fiscal year twenty six budget. And so, yeah, and so, you know, if, if, if this doesn't happen, which is fine, that's, that's up to you, then we'll have to look in fiscal year twenty six where that's coming from, 'cause it isn't in my, in the fiscal year twenty six marketing budget.
I guess from, from my perspective, I just, you know, I support the budget of up to seven thousand, and I just trust you as marketing director to make decisions of what swag and what signage and stuff makes most sense.
Have you asked departments, departments or anybody too, what they'd like to do with their department or team?
Well, it came up in some of the internal rollouts, uh, we do have a meeting today at two o'clock. Um, so that, hoping that, um, that after we talk about the feedback we got in the internal rollouts, that maybe we can, um, maybe talk a little bit about that, but yeah.
Okay. So you're looking at, Chris, at maybe putting a max on to the seven, but using that instead of reserves, right?
Yeah.
That way we can get around.
Which is kind of how we did it with the brand rollout, because that was also something where we wanted to have things ready to go before we launched the brand, but we had to wait because we hadn't adapted the brand, so we did do a, a budget, um, for the brand rollout, um, we've been, displayed at twenty.
Lucky it's a small amount. 'Cause I thought that's.
The seven thousand increase, you said you did get some quotes back on, on this, some of the stuff that you showed.
Your app.
Assuming option one.
Yep.
And two, I think. That, that seven thousand is enough?
Yes.
For some of the work that you were looking at for this, because what you've got itemized.
So, um, let's see, on my list that I put together from yesterday, um we had talked about like mousepads, um the business card, magnets, uh promotional info cards for external promotion, signage for offices, and uh the boardroom.
Seven covers it all. And the boardroom.
Yeah.
Yep.
I was asking Gabby if there's a way we could get things going yet in June to get it, but uh timing is just not working, so.
To get your responses in on most chachkies?
All right, well, we've got a motion, we've got a second on the.
Can I, I just wanna make sure that for the minutes, because in the agenda items, what is the motion, is it two?
So the motion was using fund balance as opposed to using the remaining FY twentys and five funds.
That's what I needed. Thank you.
So we can move forward. Yeah, we'll discuss the other link, so, see what you just brought up, though, good discussion.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully see you all at two o'clock.
Just to make sure I'm tracking, so regardless, that seven thousand dollars would go back into the general fund anyway, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, she really has that left in twenty-five, it goes into fund balance.
Right.
But she's, you're gonna commit it now to.
Right, right, right.
We're committing seven.
Yeah, so base, yeah.
According to, I'm on math with that Michelle is, but I think I have closer to eleven left, but um seven was what we had discussed.
Eleven minutes.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty accurate, I just don't know what other goals might be elsewhere, I don't have it.
Yeah, there might be some.
All right, um, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries, there we are. Item eight D, resolution of the request for purchase of capital equipment for fiscal year twenty twenty-six submitted by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer, be approved and direct to chair the signed for saying to purchase one new twenty twenty-six single axle dump truck in the amount of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars from Truck Center Companies, Elkwood Heights, Iowa. So, second.
Good morning again, Board, so as you know, we did open bids here in the boardroom, I believe last week, we did receive the three bids, and at that point, the low bid was from Don's Truck Sales. Further looking at those bids, there were some explanations, there were some caveats about, um, as you can imagine, the tariffs. Don's did have a, a sentence at the bottom of their bid that said there may be a two thousand dollar pricing from Daimler Chrysler, they're the manufacturer of the chassis, the freightliner chassis. And speaking with Assistant County Engineer Mike Trinan, he advised me that uh the Truck Center's bid was more responsive because they, they did guarantee, we went back and double and triple checked with our, these two vendors, and uh Truck Centers did agree that, that theirs was a guaranteed price of the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand uh three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, they were gonna hold firm on that price and were, it would not be subject to any increases from tariffs or Henderson, for example. So I am recommending that we do take the bid from Truck Centers for the two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
What was the estimate?
I believe that we budgeted for FY twenty-six, Allison, did we budget two hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Uh, two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five, and we generally go, the way we create our estimate is we go ask the dealers, like, October, November, when we're putting our, our budget together, so for an estimate for a vehicle, we're generally asking the dealers for that price, so that's how we budget.
Be interesting, you know, how often we're gonna see that tariff language come up in, in bids.
So resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Kurten Buck.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight E, resolution to approve the IRS Form seven twenty to remit payment of two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and four cents for the county's uh patient-centered outcomes research institute uh fee for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four planned year as required by the Affordable Care Act, be approved and direct the chair to sign as recommended by Tim Jamison Systems Real Estate Tax Manager, and Todd Cameron.
So.
I think we need to roll that date forward a year.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's.
No, I thought you said it was.
I didn't hear what you said, sorry, Tim Jamison Systems Real Estate Tax Manager, um we're paying this in arrears, that's for the last um fiscal year for the Health Insurance Trust Fund, so it's a twenty-three, twenty-four year.
It's twenty-five just ended.
Right, but we're paying it for the prior year, they, they run a year again. It's just a tax on our Health Insurance Trust Fund, IRS says pay it, it should be better.
I got Schwartz for the motion I did.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call please.
Kurten Buck.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight F, motion to approve the FY twenty-six ICAP member proxy uh form, listing Michelle Weidner and Lori Warmer's as members, uh lia, member liaisons and direct the chair to sign for saying.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item eight G, motion to accept the resignation of Wendy Schaefer as a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission effective June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and to rec staff to publicize the vacancy uh along with the qualifications required for interest candidates.
So.
All, all you got, man.
Nope.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight H, um motion that the reappointment of Karen Eggy as a commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission be approved effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five to serve a second five-year term.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, AI, motion uh that the reappointment of Andrew Shares as commissioner on the Planning and Zoning Commission be approved effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five to serve a second five-year term.
So.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, motion eight J, motion that uh the reappointment of Henry Fork as a commissioner of the Veterans Affairs Commission be approved effective June thirty, uh twenty twenty-five to serve a second three-year term as recommended by Alana Lovelace, Director of Veterans Affairs.
So. For second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We just had a question, and I don't know that anybody wants to add, but um it's the ones that are approving for their effective June thirtieth, their terms actually expire in June thirtieth, so wouldn't be effective July one? Should we?
I had that same question.
Okay, all right.
But I didn't want to upset the apple cart.
No, well, I, just that's.
Sounds a weird day.
Yeah, no, that's all right, well, their term goes through June thirtieth, so I would think we'd have, but yeah, you're, you're correct, and we're being corrected, we changed it to July one.
Maybe the theory was you're starting it the, the, the day before the effective day so that there's no gap?
No, I don't think that, I think it just was probably a typo.
Is it still okay?
Yeah.
Is it all right to just make it?
I think it's all fine, since you're making it effective the day before, but it is a little bit off, but it's still worse.
Nice catch, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Not really, I know, we're either going back and amend those, because we put that in all kinds of statements and records and things, and I guess to me, it was the
Yeah.
why would we go back to the thirtieth, I'm sorry, but can we do that, what can we, kind of an easy action can we do to make it to our?
Can we just, can we just club them? Eight H through HJ, and then one.
You already, you already passed.
We've already passed all three.
Um. There's three that.
What if before you, did you, did you pass J yet?
Yes.
Yes.
Or did you just second one, did you?
No, we.
Did we do roll call?
We, we did roll call it, it was.
Um, you could. Okay.
They did not, they didn't all approve J, there was just a motion and a second.
I thought.
Perfect, okay, who did the issue?
I don't really, I didn't ask that before you said.
Yep, just before we. Before we get all the favor, okay, cool, then who did the motion to approve J? All right, so he can make a friendly amendment to his motion that J be, a motion to approve effective July one as well as all previous appointments on calendar effective July one.
Yeah, I can do that.
All of those.
Yep. Motion.
As long as Karen does it, Karen does it, we do it, yeah.
Karen first.
First. Third.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put it in.
Yeah.
What's your second?
Thank you, Karen, Karen, just, just, thank you, Karen.
It's a pleasure for, for a friendly amendment to this motion to, in, to change the effective date to July one on that as well as all previous appointments.
Reappointments, yeah, okay, thank you.
Do we have a second on that friendly motion?
Second.
Friendly amendment. Amendment and friendly motion.
Friendly, friendly amendment, second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Motion, uh, the amendment approves, and then do we need, now we need to vote on item eight J, uh, but reflected on eight.
Now you go on that. I might have forgotten that, but I'm just, yeah.
I'm glad you did, I, I rather that way, because we, because all those are record-keeping things, so.
All right, uh, do we have a motion on eight, eight J, with new dates?
So.
So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, item eight K, uh, motion to direct the county order to advertise for public hearing and bid opening to be held at nine oh five on Tuesday, July fifteenth, in one room, two oh one in Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa. On proposed purchase of furniture for the phase B pine press campus renovations.
So.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
He's got it, he's got it.
Good morning, Board, we're giving uh Facilities Director, uh, this uh hearing was originally set for today. Unfortunately, we were not able to get it in the paper on time, uh, we missed the deadline, and so uh we're just asking for this to be moved to the fifteenth to meet the requirements for bidding process.
Is that the motion table? Sorry, that'd be motion table.
Well, we need to post it.
No, I think we. What you know?
It, it's going to be, it's uh going to be published in the paper just for uh uh rescheduling the date for the bid opening.
So.
And that's the deadline.
Okay, so wait, was it originally, did, did they set the public hearing for today originally?
Yes.
Okay, but we didn't make the public hearing deadline.
We didn't make the published in the paper.
Published in the paper deadline for it to be in time for the public hearing to be today.
Correct.
So now aren't you going to have the public hearing on the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so, but they, have they ever previously made a motion to set public hearing for today?
They previously did make a motion to set for today.
Then, again, I don't want to upset the apple cart, but I, I would recommend that you motion to table this until the fifteenth, it's your previously made motion, they're gonna have the public hearing on the fifteenth, because that's.
So tabling the advertising?
This is to, this is to advertise.
No.
So this, this motion is just to advertise?
It's just to say, it's just to set it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Advertise.
Just to advertise.
Advertise for.
So now they're, now they're resetting the public hearing for fifteen?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's right, okay.
Right, you know, why, was it on our end or was it?
It was, it was communication on our end, yeah, apologize for that.
It's like, I remember at least one other time where we made the deadline and they just didn't get the.
Not this going around, this, this is on us.
Okay.
Yep.
But it is a problem, not here, but in general, the publication notices, it's, it's every municipal entity is having trouble with finding newspapers to do publications, it's really unfortunate.
Like a simple legislative change might make that not a problem, right?
It would.
I shouldn't say simple.
It would, because instead of being a, 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 a county newspaper run with regular blah, blah, blah within the county, it could be posting from the website would serve as the notification, and plus that would save fees for multiple rural communities that are spending lots of money on publication notices.
They've received these proposals every year.
I did put it in for a legislative committee last week for the auditor's affiliate, and the board plant didn't move forward, but I'd be happy to share the language for another affiliate to move it forward.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you.
So we did have a motion and a second, I believe we voted.
Yes, you're right.
Okay, I was gonna say.
All right. Item eight.
I'm gonna have to go back and re-watch this.
Uh huh, some riveting stuff.
Get the popcorn, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Uh.
Oh, you're right, because you stopped them from voting, because you said, well, it's got something to say.
I think a couple was voted.
So, yeah, so we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, all in favor of item eight K, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, there we are.
See.
Clarify. Yeah. All right. Eight L, discussion of the intersection of Canfield and Bucano, it's just like, I just see a bit, such a way is it?
Good morning again, Board. So, uh, last fall, I, I came to the Board of Supervisors, I know we have a, a new board member since then, and I, I told you that we were going to work over the winter on uh coming up with some information about improving uh roadway safety here in the county. We do take roadway safety very seriously, so I wanted to retouch on this uh topic. So, uh, if you recall, last September, we did have a fatality at Bucano Canfield Road Intersection. And after that fatality, there was uh quite a bit of public uh messaging to the Board of Supervisors and to the engineer, primarily through email. A lot of proposals, uh, the most preferred proposal did seem to be uh individuals calling for a roundabout, they just wanted us to, to check the safety of that intersection, give it a better look. Um, this, the following week or two weeks later, we did have another fatality at a different intersection on Union and uh Cedar Hopsey, early intersection. And at that time, I came back to you and I said that we wanted to spend some time over the winter analyzing some data and talking to you about any improvements we can make to our intersections. So that is why I'm here talking to you uh this morning. Uh, before we discuss uh any particular intersection in Blackhawk County, there's a couple of things I did want to share with you, I've talked to you at length before, some of you uh quite at length about um some of the different things we look at when we're talking about roadway safety. And we talked about corridor improvements and spot improvements, or corridor accidents and spot accidents. Uh, I've talked to you at length about uh how we make corridor improvements by placing uh six inch, six inch pavement markings or rumble strips, uh widened shoulders, so the DOT encourages us to look at our system, we're looking at corridors, or we're looking at a system-wide improvements for roadway safety. Uh, of course, there are also spot improvements we can make, and those are typically at intersections, and those could be everything ranging from left turn lanes for, or right turn lanes, uh, traffic signals, which we're not, we don't really have, we don't have traffic signals out in, in Blackhawk County. Or roundabouts, so there are numerous ways we can do spot improvements at our intersections. Another thing that's also important to consider when we talk about roadway safety and how to look at that, how to analyze that, would be crash data. And the Iowa Department of Transportation has, has probably the best crash data in the country, they're very good at collecting the data, and they're very good at sharing it with with everybody, it's on a website, we can all access it, we're all able to look at data. The DOT encourages us to look at ten years of data, in fact, we can't look any further back currently uh than ten years, so that is what they advise us to look at, is ten years' worth of data. So we want to look at uh crash data, and that is typically in the form of comparing how many vehicles are entering an intersection, or how many vehicles on the roadway are we talking about? In this case, the data I'm gonna show you today is talking about millions of vehicles entering an intersection, millions of entering vehicles to that intersection. Uh, a more recent uh way to look at crashes that's being proposed by the Iowa DOT is potential crash reduction, and they're encouraging agencies, themselves included, to look at uh similar type of intersections around the state or around your region, around our county, in our case. They're encouraging us to look at how this intersection compares to other intersections in our county. And then the difference between the number of expected crashes and the number of predicted crashes in our county with our intersections. So those are two of the statistics I want to show you this morning. We did share a little bit, we did share this data with you last fall, but I wanted to go back to it and show you. We're talking about the millions of entering vehicles, an accident crash rate, we've categorized the top five vehicles, excuse me, the top five intersections here at Blackhawk County. We've categorized the top five vehicles, excuse me, the top five intersections here at Blackhawk County, according to that M U V crash rate. And then you can see that our two highest intersections with our highest crash rates would be Elprun Road and Donald Street, and Dunkerton and Wyler Roads. And this is, uh, this is based on data, looking at crash data over the past ten years. And then you can go down the list and we, Highway sixty-three and Cedar Wobbsy shows up there, and then Geyser and Orange Roads. And then here, number five is Canfield and Dubuque Roads, and it rates at a one point zero. So, in the scheme of our intersections, it rates number five, so it's definitely not our worst intersection as far as, uh, if you look back at crash data. Here I've listed the actual traffic entering the intersections, and you can see that Highway sixty-three is far away, obviously the highest, has the highest traffic entering the, our intersections. If you look at that new parameter that they're, the DOT is favoring now potential crash reduction. Again, Highway sixty-three and Cedar Wobbsy shows up very high, because it has a lot of traffic, and that's one way to reduce, potentially reduce crashes, is to target an intersection that has a lot of traffic. The DOT has committed to looking at this intersection, Highway sixty-three and Cedar Wobbsy. They are starting a study of that intersection beginning in either December or January. And they've selected a consultant who is working closely with, uh, AECOM, I, I believe it's Howard Arbrine is the consultant. And their, uh, AECOM is the consultant who's working on the Northeast bypass study for Blackhawk County and the cities. So, that's good news for us, that is, a lot of accidents happen there, we don't have jurisdiction of the main highway, but they are starting to look at that. And then you can see that Elprun Road and Donald Street, because it does get a lot of traffic, it also shows up very high. So, for us to look at that, we do take, uh, roadway safety very seriously, but this is not our highest, Canfield and Dubuque is not our highest, uh, intersection with the highest traffic crash rate. Just, just as I told you last fall. However, we did wanna look at how to improve safety at that intersection. Uh, we did, uh, look at the ten-year accident history, there were nineteen crashes at that intersection, one fatality. Uh, the biggest crash factor is of course, uh, vehicle conflicts, turning movements, vehicles colliding with each other, vehicles not yielding the right way. We also asked for a road safety audit, and this, uh, it's participants from the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau, local law enforcement, the Iowa DOT, and then the local technical assistance program. This was done last November, uh, they, they showed up, there was about ten of, ten people came to Blackhawk County. We met and had an overview of the intersections, and then we went out on site and actually got to stand in the intersections and hear opinions on how to make improvements. They did issue us over the report, there were numerous improvements at Dubuque-Canfield Roads included in that report. Everything from moving the stop bars forward to, uh, making the intersection smaller, to, or appearing to make it smaller by moving the stop bars closer together. And this should say deeper milling for inset pavement markings so that the pavement markings would last longer. Uh, there was a recommendation to include skip striping as you go around, as you, as, uh, move, vehicles are making the turning movements. Uh, Cedar Falls, an example of this would be Cedar Falls has spiking road, there are new, there are entirely new interchange there, they have skip stripes to the intersection for the traffic to follow. That was a recommendation like, they made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, is there not a flashing red light at the intersection to north and south?
There is, there is, I, I did to that, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So currently, there is a stop sign with flashing LED lights around the perimeter of the stop sign, and that is at both the north approach and the south approach. And we currently have two stop ahead, so these would be stop ahead intersections that we place at our intersection sign. We have two of them currently on Canfield. We've decided that we are going to double up our stop signs, this is, uh, a practice that is, that is being done more and more by counties, cities, to just give more exposure to a stop sign, to the traveling public. We are now going to have four stop signs, one on each side at the stop bar. They will, all four of those stop signs will be, um, thirty-six inch, so that's a large stop sign, and they will be LED flashing stop signs. We already have the four stop ahead signs, and we are going to, we, we currently have these intersection ahead warning signs, so we are going to put the Canfield Road, the name placard down below the, the stop ahead intersection, ahead. So that is what we're proposing to do, these should go up probably next week after the holiday, I believe we have everything in stock now. We, we will get that done in the next week or two. And then we are going to start looking at, uh, some uniformity among our intersections. And going back to that list of the highest crash rates, it was, uh, Elprun Road and Donald Street. We are waiting for that, um, the study that I was referring to, that's being completed by AECOM, the Northeast Bypass Study. We're waiting for some of that work to get done, uh, in case we, we've thought about making that a four-way stop or changing the direction of the stop signs. But we really feel like, if we get that accomplished, a year later, the Northeast Bypass Study may come out with a different result, and we don't wanna give mix, um, we don't wanna confuse traffic out there by making sudden changes, and a sudden change could be something six months later. So we're gonna leave that intersection alone, even though it is our highest, um, crash rate intersection in the county. Hopefully, within a year or two, we will have something come out of that study.
Can I get a question for you?
Yes.
Stop me from getting too far ahead, are you gonna go into the causation of the, of these crashes? Cause, well, I guess what I'm getting at is, I would assume cell phones have a large part, distraction.
Yes, that, it's being with law enforcement, they, that does seem to be a, becoming a larger factor. Uh, people, drivers are not stopping, making any attempt to stop at our stop signs. The best thing we can do is try and give them more notice that there is a stop sign ahead of, ahead of them, they're approaching a stop sign, rumble strips. That is how we know how to be effective to these drivers. And we're gonna need law enforcement to help with the enforcing of, you know, cell phones, for example.
Right.
But I do agree with you, that is becoming a very large problem, and it's, it's really hard to be proactive when people aren't, it's possibly, you know, breaking because they, they're not paying attention to stop sign.
I'm sorry, I keep interrupting.
No, that's quite all right.
Can, can I ask, kind of follow up?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Cause I know several times we've had intersections in the county and they put in four-way stops. Has there ever been a follow-up as to how effective doing the four-way stop is? Like Canfield, I know someone personally is, before your timeline, was in a very serious accident there, almost killed in an accident. I wanna say it was two thousand seven, two thousand six, two thousand seven. But I always wondered why that wasn't a four-way stop, as much traffic did we got north and south from that intersection?
So, we, we have considered that, we, we've considered, there's more traffic volume going north-south now than there is going east-west.
Yeah.
Uh, there was some consideration giving, given to reversing the stop signs, putting the stop signs on to defer. At this point, we just wanna make incremental changes, we feel like particularly the most recent, the fatality, um, we're not sure how much it had to do with observance of the stop sign, or there was indications that the driver didn't even brake. They, we're not sure if they, when you, over the rumble strips, even, I, I don't really wanna speculate on some of that, but, uh. Like you said, sometimes it's hard to know without some follow-up, we will follow up on this, it does, fortunately, we, we don't have very many fatalities in, in the county, and when we have one, that, that gets noticed. We, we of course want to improve upon that. We're hesitant to make drastic changes, uh, drastic changes can cost a lot of money, for saying roundabouts. Four-way stops are not a lot of money. Uh, and we do tend to work, we have worked with the law enforcement, with our sheriff's office, we always wanna work with them, I was just telling Nate what, um, we have talked to them over the winter about what changes we'll be making. We felt that this was a, we will try this, this is the first instance we have of the, the double stop signs in the county, we wanted to try this. And not necessarily go with a four-way stop, um, sometimes four-way stops can lead to more accidents, especially right at first with, um, with rear enders, with rear ending. We know that that is very, very busy intersection during commute times. Uh, with the four-way stop, we were also worried about traffic backing up at the four-way stop, particularly with the morning commute as, uh, individuals are going westbound on Dubuque Road. And trying to make the turn to go southbound to Highway twenty. We feel that in this particular case, at that intersection of four-way stop, we, we would like to do a traffic study if we were to go with a four-way stop route, because we're worried about lots of traffic backing up, particularly at, in the morning hours, and then creating, um, rear end accidents if we were to put a four-way stop. So at that particular intersection, we would feel more comfortable with a traffic study, because we're not experts in, in this type of thing. So that's why we wanna, we would like to be proactive and put the double stop signs up, and we can potentially budget for, uh, professional services to do a traffic study at Dubuque-Canfield Roads. Uh, moving forward, we would like to see, see more uniformity at our, at all of our rural intersections, um, go with, uh, all of them have stop bars, all of them have rumble strips. Um, some of our signing isn't consistent, we wanna have double stop aheads, possibly put in more double stop signs in our higher traffic intersections. So that is what I wanted to tell you this, this morning, we are, we of course are looking at ways to, uh, apply for, uh, the DOT through traffic safety improvement grants, we are always keeping our eye on that. And those, those we can receive up to five hundred thousand dollars a year, and they are of course competitively driven with all entities, cities and counties from around the state of Iowa. Can I answer any questions about the studying, or look at it in general or a particular intersection?
I just had a question on, on that list of the top five, you showed, P C Os.
Yes.
Any idea, just for the sort of context of other area improvements that have happened within municipalities? Of where the one point nine two or the one point three, for instance, how that would compare with other intersections that have received some state funds, um?
So the Highway sixty-three and the Cedar Wobbsy, uh, I told you that they, we are, the DOT is initiating a study with a, a consultant, uh, that will begin ear, late this year or early next, uh, January. We're hopeful that that, they will come up with some solutions to lower those, the traffic, the crash rates there. Uh, as far as like the one point three one at Elprun, again, that has to go, that's probably a, a high potential because of the high traffic volumes.
Yeah, I guess that's kind of my question, right, is there a sort of a general rule of, um, that, hey, if it hits this point, the state does tend to start to invest in dollars?
The DOT does have those, those thresholds are, but they don't have those set in stone, that I can't look at a table.
Yeah.
And the DOT says, yes, when it reaches this number, we are, we're gonna fund this, and we don't have, county, we don't have any thing like that, either because we have a smush, a much smaller budget. Uh. The, the DOT has categorized those as high, mainly of low, like the one point nine two is high, so therefore, we're hopeful that they are more proactive. And hopefully getting that at a five to ten year plan to improve the Cedar Wobbsy, sixty-three. We don't have that. I don't, we can, we should definitely be looking at that, but at this point, we don't have any established criteria when, when we reach a certain P C R or a certain crash rate, we will take this, uh, this action.
Yeah.
That's a good question. Can I answer any more questions?
I was gonna say I like the idea of doing the double stop signs or whatever to add more visibility, I don't like the idea of doing a four-way there, I mean, it, it seems, there's only so much you can do for a way, I think, if the cause is phones. There's a, they're, it's gonna happen regardless, and there's gonna smash into something regardless, so, I mean, you brought up some good reasons, uh, to try to stay away from the four-way. But, yeah, I like the idea of, of doing a traffic study too, so.
Yeah, yes, we, in that particular location, we're just concerned about the backup.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, so we, we, we wanna be cautious before making, so that we don't make it worse.
Right, right. Right.
Yeah.
I mean, to your point of the phones, like, I know you've mentioned that with Nate, right, like how do you get some additional enforcement in certain areas, uh, to enforce some of the new laws about cellphone usage? It's just, I'd imagine from a practical standpoint, that's, that's a difficult thing to do with four, right?
Well, unmarked cars, is how you, when people sneak up and they don't realize they're next to a cop, and they're sitting there doing this, FaceTime and somebody across the country, catch ya?
Yeah.
Uh, but outside of doing that, like, the, people tend to not act in their natural habitat when they see a marked out car, so.
I mean, the, the other solution there, ever popular, would be some sort of stoplight cam, um, that, at these intersections where we, where we, right? Is there a, if all of a sudden answering that text message, it costs me seventy-five dollars, I, I'm likely not doing it, and, uh, if we were to ever explore that, which I'm not opposed to.
I love it, just by the way.
Yeah, I, now, I think, I don't love the idea of it being a revenue generator for us, I, I would wanna see us use those dollars towards a very designated purpose. Uh, but I, I think that it might be a, a thing worth exploring, um, because you're, if you're gonna blow through one stop sign, you're probably gonna blow through two. Um, and, and if you're distracted, you're distracted, but if you know that text message is gonna cost you some real money, all of a sudden it, that negative, uh, deterrent can be a real deterrent.
Oh shoot, people even smashing their cop cars when they blow through red lights.
Yeah.
Weapon mode, flipper hold.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be open to exploring, um, some limited use of cameras too. Um, what I don't want, I don't like when people use a private company that comes in, and then there's, I think that's a slippery slope, slope that's been done in a lot of communities, but I'd want us to have ownership.
So, to address that in particular, I, I don't know all the details because counties haven't been using these, but if you recall, the Iowa, the legislature made some changes to that, and they prohibited the use of any new cameras while they're doing a study. I think it's a two to three year study to be done, completed in either twenty-seven or twenty-eight, and then they would allow people, uh, agencies to submit applications for these, um, red light, or red stop sign cameras. So, that's about what I know about right now, but I can certainly do some research, research on it.
It's good. You, Kathy. Hard to imagine the state legislature would limit it with local control.
Yeah, I just seen.
Local revenue.
Uh, oh, yeah, yeah. Um, item eight M, discussion of possible board action with the F Y twenty-six community agency funding applications.
Now, I just.
Two.
I think we're gonna start first with the rating forms, I would make sure everybody understood, there's a million options we could do, but we, um, these are just three, I just wanted to make sure you saw them and understand how they work. The first option, which is kind of what's. The first option, which is kind of what we started out thinking we would use, assign a point total per category. So any weighting of the score is simply by the total assigned to that category. You are, you can put whatever you want in a category, you don't have to choose each one. You're gonna get to the same score as long as you don't exceed the total you're supposed to be in. And you may be wondering, all these examples that I gave you come out to a hundred because I wanted to show how things might look different to you as you're scoring it and you're still getting to the same overall score, but it's a very different pathway to get there. So the second option, um, and really this is so that you would rate each, I'm calling the columns in white subcategories of the, of that category. So the most you could assign to each one of these would be ten points. And then, but there is weighting attached to it. So for example, in this first category, the most you can, the most you can rate it, I'm gonna use the term rate right there, is twenty. You can give ten in each of the first two for a total of twenty. But then a formula gets applied to max that out at thirty. So that's how the weighting is applied there. So in each, each subcategory gets that rating availability of ten points and then it gets multiplied by a weighting factor. This one doesn't happen to have a weighting factor. This one does, so consider there's three columns. So there's a total of thirty rating points. But when we apply the weighting factor, the most you can get in that category, even if you get all three, ten each, you're, the most you can award that person is twenty, that entity. And the last one, again, thirty, but it's getting reduced to a maximum of ten. It's just a different way to think about those, that you're rating each of the subcategories to a maximum of ten each and then we'll apply the weighting for what is the more important. The last one, I, I attempted and I haven't really experimented to see if it works with all point totals, but I tried to take option two and make it straight points. So for example, um, get over here. Your, your total then for this first category, because when I weigh the total points, the total points it could gain is forty-three. So you would have, you'd be able to assign a total of forty-three points anywhere you want in one of the, one or both of those two categories to get to the full forty-three total. Same with this one, you can assign forty points anywhere you want to get to the forty-point total. In this one, because the weightings are smaller, you're limited to only being able to assign fourteen points to those three categories. And this last category, you can only assign three points. It's just a, just different ways of helping you to work through how you would score each application. And I do wanna mention, there is one column here that we, we changed that name. That originally said realistic budget. We talked about changing that to needs justification. As I looked at our other columns, I decided maybe it would be more helpful because I think we have needs justification for the project on here in other places. So I thought, well, maybe we could use how much does your organization rely on this funding? So that column became your organization needs justification if you agree with that. And that's totally, totally up to you, these are just suggestions I'm putting forth to see what, what works for all of you.
I know, one question that came to mind when I was just looking at the, the headings and seeing was, will the applicants understand our definitions when they see what, how we're scoring? Does that match? I didn't go back and check.
I did.
For the most part, the application requirements, like, at when we asked the questions.
I changed. Yep, that's a change I did make to the application. Go down to the page with the evaluation criteria. Probably the way I can zoom this.
Cause they'll actually see this, this will be some, we'll have this as part of the application that they look at and they can see this is what we're gonna be scoring on.
Correct.
So then I thought, yeah, they'll be kind of set to be like, what is it?
Yeah, so under the section to evaluation criteria, I, I can revise that wording.
Oh, okay, I just wondered.
So in the first line, for some reason, we said it will demonstrate one or more of the following criteria. I thought, oh, that isn't really what we're doing. So I changed that to say it will demonstrate projected results based on the following criteria because that's really how you're gonna score it. And then I made each of these categories, the first line should be that, that category heading on your worksheet. And then underneath it, I have just put one, kind of one bullet and listed the categories, the sub, what I'm gonna call the subcategories. So that wording should all match between the scoring sheet and what we say we're evaluating it on here now.
I just meant so they'd see them really.
They should, yeah, they shouldn't just match, hopefully, exactly. I think that was, those are the only changes that I made to the application itself from the version you saw last week. So we can look at an example of that. So the first one, the overall project category is demonstrates economic community or social impact. And then I say scoring will include items such as community needs, clearly identified and quantified and clearly defined project goals. If we flop back to the application and we go to that same category, that heading of the subcategory should match what was on the application. Communities clearly identified and quantified and defined project goals. And hopefully, that has followed through all the way across. I think I got those all looked at last night, so.
From a formatting side, I think it's maybe a little easier instead of combining those into one sentence to do another bullet point, uh, there.
I, I debated that, I was trying to save space, but I can do that, it's fine. I, it, I actually started out that way, I'll put it back that way. The other thing I think would be helpful is if we, I wanna flip the scoring sheet so that, um, you go down for one application, I, I kinda think that flows better. I don't know what you're looking at. It flows better in my head. I preferred, we, you do have a horizontal one, um.
Oh yeah, I need to pre印或者something, I like, I like the, the down, this, this goes, like, going to, you know, work the sword.
This. Yeah. This just, these colors are a little easier on my eyes, so I'm looking at this one.
But that's just me.
Yeah, so whichever of those formats you prefer.
I think, I mean, I could work with either three of those formats, but I think the first one's the most straight up.
Okay, option one on the scoring sheet.
It's the most what, Chris?
Straight.
Yeah, the most, yeah, you, we're also, I mean, I think we all understand how all of them work, but for, for people looking at it, that's the easiest one for them.
Yeah.
To get their head out without.
Yeah, and that's what, and that's what I'm afraid of, we ask in a broad group.
Need explanation with this one's weighted and this one's.
Yeah, and the broad group we apply, appeal to. That's why I thought some of those questions, like even when we ask, um, the cost for resident benefit and some of those things, if they don't, you don't want somebody to not be, you know, if they didn't fill out the question or didn't answer, then that just requires their application. Um, I just don't believe I'd be able to do that. There's some that are really, it's very sad.
I think sometimes, I mean, I mean.
Okay, that's the criteria.
You kinda need that, right? Otherwise, you're gonna have this compression where you're gonna have nines and tens and that's it. Look at Heather, I know she remembers these painful conversations.
They're trying to make it less painful.
Oh.
Well, I mean, the, another option you have is you could change the total points per category. So if you, you know, if you want one category to be weighted higher, we can change them to whatever works to, to attempt to address that, yeah.
I know, I thought we have like twelve sets and then we gotta come up with ten, a hundred and then it's like, well, if we need to, we could do something with ten.
So you zoom out just a little bit on this so we can see the, that fourth, uh, category that, that only had ten points.
Yeah.
See, initially, when we were looking at these last week, I was just looking at these as what we're looking for in these apps when we're reviewing them. So I was still thinking myself, I'd go thirty, I wouldn't gauge each one then like, I wouldn't go ten, 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 ten probably. I'd go, yep, thirty or twenty-five, I was just using those as the criteria for myself. If I, and maybe, maybe it is best to just do it.
And, and, yeah, so from my, I guess from my perspective, it's just, it's easier to go on a scale of one to ten for each subcategory than if, to me, one to ten, right, your A is a nine or a ten, a B is an eight, right, so on and so forth. Um, when you get in that first, that first version, you get to, whether it's three or four or maybe it's, right, like, it, it, there's just not enough points in that category to, um, to me, to sort of allow to get to sort of the right assignment. The other thing that would be a little tricky with, with that first option would be project feasibility. You've got three subcategories, so you're then saying that, that middle one, which I can't read now that I haven't shown soup all the way out.
Simple always seems to, I mean, there are.
Clear product, right?
I think for the applicants, more than, I mean, us too, make it simple for us, but I just thought for them, as much, um, extra steps to avoid, but I just thought for them to understand the scoring and how we were doing.
Yeah, to me, if, if I can just take each sub subsection or sub-question and rate it on a scale of one to ten, that'll, that'll spit out what the, what the value is. Then I'm, then I'm comparing each, everything has sort of equal and I'm not having to sort of parse, well, I give this one one point or I give it no points. In all, however, I would say on the, on the budget question, I think I'd actually prefer it to say project needs justification versus organizational, cause I, I don't, I don't necessarily wanna see these dollars be sort of underwriting for entire organizations. I'd like to see them, I think the language and the sort of spirit of the fund is to be very project-specific.
Yeah. Project, not your name.
Yeah.
So, under economic, community, and social development, the column that says community needs clearly identified or and demonstrate return on investment, all those things, there's thinking are different enough, so, okay. So you want that to say projects.
Yeah. And it's clear then, then it's the project that they want here.
Yeah.
Not, I don't see.
Yeah, I don't wanna send any signal that this is about.
Your organization.
By the entirety of your programs.
Right, cause we say in the application, we try to say this is not a guaranteed source of funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't expect to get this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that's fine, I can change that, so I can change it right now for that matter.
So, you want all of these to be reflected in?
Uh, to, to me, to me, that's second, the second version is just a little easier with each answer than the way, in the category.
Oh, I see, that, that's, yeah, but that one's got the formula, but that's got the formula.
It's got a formula, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe I could add a column with the weighting, maybe that would clarify it. Cause I understand what, the, coming from the raters' perspective,
Yeah.
I can see why it might be easier if, if these are the right category, subcategories, for one thing, that it might be easier to rate each of those on a one through ten and be consistent. So maybe what I could do is add a column in here somewhere that says category weighting. And so for that, first one is one point five, second one is one, then you get to point six, seven, and point three.
You could probably do it in that header. So underneath of the category, it just sort of says, you know.
Yeah, okay, I could do that. Yep.
Some of it's identified, so.
Yep, small part, cause we have room, I could do that.
I think maybe even, um, explaining it, instead of using like the weighted factor number, explaining this category is worth thirty percent of the score, this category is worth, worth. I thought, I think that that might be even more simple for folks to, uh, understand what we're doing there.
Where would you put it or how, if you have something in mind? Oh, you don't.
Yeah, I would just add.
I could put that under the, in the blue right at the top.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, some hallway you've got one.
Okay.
There was some kind of adjustment like that, I do like number two, though.
I get the tens, that, that makes it much easier, but I just let two, without sharing the weighted and how we're doing it, made it another thing to be transparent and explain, and if they don't get it, then they'll be called.
Yep.
Ask, so. So you have to struggle maybe with where or how or whatevers, but yeah, we're.
Some general format.
Fairly, not too long. Yeah, as long as it's transparent and we bet people can understand it.
So then.
You're okay otherwise, like the, I don't know, the thirties, the forties, the twenties, and tens, that makes, still keeping it that way as far as the Kimball scores is okay?
I think that'll.
Nobody willing to change any of those.
I think those, I think the thirty, forties, twenties, and tens are all right.
Okay. I didn't know if the impact or, you know, anything else, if anybody wanted to change.
Everyone's good, do we?
Oh, I, yeah, are you, I didn't know, there was one thing I, I wanted, I, I, you did a great job. I know everybody looking at these and changing the language in the application. But I thought that Rob Sands directive, you know, sticks out in my head over and over again that these can only be used for services and we do mention public purposes. But where it says community service funds may be used only to fund services, I thought we probably should use the stronger language and say community services funds can only be used to fund services. Since we were directed that that's the only.
Then we should may, can.
Yeah, not may, yeah, just, just why we're doing it is because this is what we directed. We could only do with them, so.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna replace can with shall then, maybe? I think I think can, sounds like, somebody might think it's optional, but if we're mandated by.
Must, shall.
Shall either.
Standard.
Shall, only, I meant whatever, but it just needs to be, that we can't, we don't have a choice in it, sorry.
I think shall or.
And the nots, are the nots underlined and stuff in there when we've got the examples of capital expenditures? Not eligible or some clarification, making sure they see that too because they seem to miss.
Yeah, I had that told it.
They miss that stuff all the time.
Yep, we had.
And then give us applications that.
Like is that enough to just do the word?
I don't know, I, as we've tried, all we're doing is trying as much as we can to make it easy for everybody, but.
Might still end up good, I think.
Yep, and then we just qualify them and then, yeah, say.
And, and, I think with this year, right, staff will sort of re-screen to some extent to make sure that, that what we're evaluating is. I do think it would be good for us to, even, even though they are screened and.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, if, if you can send what, you know, if, if there is a capital project.
Yeah.
Maybe don't send it along with the, you know, included in the scoring rubric, but just to send it along to us, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just so we know.
Definitely. Kinda get to the scoring for those that, that would score.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, true.
I don't think any of us, any of us wanna be at a meeting and somebody says, oh yeah, I submitted, like, this capital project and, and we don't know.
Oh yeah, to know what was submitted, I think, yeah, just in a fair, what is, yeah, so it's.
So the thought is to try to get this out by, out posted, a slightly shorter week.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm thinking by, by Monday? And is it up for thirty days, is left for sixty?
Well, speaking, what do we, I was gonna say, we can do sixty and see where we're at, obviously. Cause if, if we still think that more would should come in or we'd like more or whatever, and if we wanna do ninety.
I always. Oh, no, I don't.
How many hundreds or thousands do you want?
I, I think thirty, uh, to be honest, I, I think thirty is fine. It's not like most of, most of these projects are going after other dollars anyways. They've, they've got this ready to, to send over and if we go, to me, even sixty, that's a good forty-five days to not do it. And then that last two weeks of that money.
No, there, you think that people start plugging at the last minute, then they overload, okay?
Yeah. So I think if we just went with thirty days, I think it's relatively standard for. So I think if, if we just went with thirty days, that's, I think it's relatively standard for local brands.
Yeah.
I just got through a bunch of what's your complicated USDA grants and they were only out for thirty days.
They're, okay, I was gonna say, I hadn't even thought recently, what are they doing this, thirty, yeah.
Usually.
As long as we get the order out, like I said, as broad as we can, that, that it's available, do it, with Gabby's help, we can get that heard. Let's see how many.
So.
How long, how long does it take for information like this to circulate and get out? But I guess that would be my concern.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's, there's a, Gabby can circ and post it online, uh, on our social channels, which are forever growing.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes.
I see her work, uh.
Repeat customers are gonna be back, yeah, they'll be.
We've also got, yeah, we've got a list of folks who've applied, um, and then I think, you know, just any of us as, as folks of identified needs, I think if we can send, send them whatever that link is.
Been several inquiry, um, for, yeah.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah. Alright.
Could we be done with that?
So, so do you think it's reasonable, Michelle, if we say we want this posted by the seventh? That would be Monday at some point?
I need either Gabby and or Teresa's assistance, so that's gonna depend on their schedules, and I know today, you know, we have meetings this afternoon.
Okay.
I, we'll get it done as soon as we can, but I, I would hope Monday or sooner, but they.
Oh, I think it, I mean, I think it'd be okay if it would be the, the fourteenth, or.
I was gonna say, we have the holiday and I know too, with people.
Yeah.
Alright.
So post it, if we say post it on the fourteenth, close whatever thirty days after the fourteenth is.
Fourteenth Monday.
We can communicate that with anyone who's chatted with us.
Sure.
That gives comfort to her to make the thing.
Yeah, yeah, gives us a buffer here to post it and refine and all that, so, cool.
Could you wanna take any action on approving the updated application process review then?
Yeah, we probably should.
I like that motion.
Sure, second.
That's the, to post on the fourteenth, we can get criteria to move out lines uh this morning or afternoon, um.
We see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll be like in the minutes, right?
I, I can.
All those changes, no, I just meant, Michelle, we get it.
Alright, uh, all in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item nine, any reports or information from the board?
Sure, we've had a solid expedition meeting last week and there's um a number of big things we're considering, but not anywhere close to making a decision on whether to, to bring services in-house, uh, which would provide the ability of actually offering more services, you know, for example, we're um, not a facility that um offers hazardous waste, it's just like the two very inconvenient hazardous waste events a year. Um, but there's a lot more to consider for that, um, so no decisions are being close to being made, uh, in that, uh, but it will be coming in the next number of months. Uh, but we did have, uh, what I think is an exciting proposal, um, come to us just the last couple of weeks, of someone interested in building a community solar project on top of one of the retired landfill sites, so it'd just be, you know, really repurposing it for tell, uh, there's no other purpose for it, um, and so, um, very hopeful for that, but those are the two big updates.
I just wanna thank TJ and Gabby for our help with doing the home assessment town halls. We have more people at Waterloo than Cedar Falls and still people interested in it, um, but I think really appreciated the one-on-one communication with folks and connected with folks on the, on the issue itself.
I was just gonna comment that we wanna send our condolences to the family of Julie Corfins. It was the twelve plus years, I think, janitor here, and I think for most people, like she was a, a friend and not just a, an employee, and so I had some thoughts go out to that family. I guess we haven't seen, received any information that I know of as far as about any services, but give me a second.
I'm gonna take the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us, say aye.
Aye.
Carries.